We we have recording in progress, so that is to be available to you and the other community members if they are missing this tunnel. Unfortunately, we have the leadership team here with you today. And I will be presenting tonight with Sebastian, who will be taking care of the second half of the presentation, really starting to bridge into next year. And then we'll give you a high level overview of where we stand, what we've been planning and a little bit of where we are when it comes to safety of our community. So thank you again so much for being in attendance. We'll dive right in. So if I can have the next slide, please. Here's the agenda for tonight. A little bit of housekeeping will be very brief. We are together for forty five minutes or so. We could push it up to an hour depending of the number of questions. Make sure that you're mid, please, so take a second. If you find that your mic is muted, we could hear a little bit of sound and that will lower the quality of the presentation. So please take a second to do that. We'll start with the COVID safety update and then we'll transition fairly quickly into what to expect for the remainder of the school year. And then we'll have Sebastian talk to us about what to anticipate in the fall. Then we will touch on the next tunnel. There will be a tunnel in mid-August to give you the latest on the reopening of the school and the resuming of the classes and campus. And then finally, we'll have a Q and A session. You will have the opportunity to ask some of the questions that you may have. Okay. All right. So let's start with housekeeping. So the tunnel will last approximately forty five to sixty minutes. The focus is on the safety update and what to anticipate in the fall. Always this little point that we want you to know that this is our best thinking at this point. And you might have noticed that the situation is still very fluid. Even though it's getting better, there are some unknowns out there, particularly given the the absence of guidance that we will have. And we 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 expect that the new guidance will be released shortly after June fifteenth, but we don't really know what to expect. And what will be in there, we anticipate that we will be better than what we currently have. So those are the assumptions up in which we're building our scenarios for the fall. We'll have the presentation, we'll have a moderated Q and A. You can write questions in the chat. Actually, starting right now and then Manon will pick some of the questions, we'll put questions together when they're on the same topic and we'll share them with us and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Outstanding questions, you could still email covid safety at eB.org or email any of us and we'll do our best to answer as early as possible. The next slide is the mission and the values. And it's important, we often look at the mission. You know, we are in a dependent school and the mission is really what is guiding our work with the community and with our students. And it's always good to go back to it, particularly in moments of uncertainty, challenges and moments where we have to really deep dive into our values and mission to get get a sense of what we're trying to accomplish. And so the mission is fairly simple. We, if you remember, we changed it a few years ago, three years ago, and we wanted to really focus on our students. And it says the the following things. It called belonging to birthly nurtures creative multilingual learners equipped to confidently embrace the delights and the challenges of an interconnected world. So just insisting upon the fact that, you know, everyone will have noticed, we've seen the challenges of an interconnected world. But I want to say tonight is really to focus on nurture. And nurture is the key word for me, and it has been this year. nurture means to care for, to further the development of, to ensure the development of students in our case. And making sure that we will create a safe environment, an environment where students could grow and very safely. So and that's that has been really the focus of our work this year. Connecting you, the families and us, the educators with the students to be able to give them a place, give them an environment where they could grow very safely. And in order to do so, we've done three things. We've focused on three things, particularly that I want to share with you now if we can have the next slide. The first one was to ensure the health and safety of our community. We have seen that this was very, very important. We had the challenge of reopening the school and the campuses and we chose to do so because we believe that this was the best way to educate our students. But this came with a set of limitations and challenges. And so we we faced those head off. But we we had to modify the way we do things pretty drastically. You've noticed that. So that was the priority number one. But the two and three were really, you know, past the measures, past the COVID safety measures. How do we do this? And what is the the? What is the why? What is the why? Why are we doing all that work? And it was to make learning meaningful and to sustain the relationships. And we've seen how important that was. Because the the learning loss was a possibility and we were concerned about this. But yeah, isolation was another one. And the fact that we wanted students to have connections and we wanted family members to have connections with their friends and with their peers, with their teachers, with the curriculum and with purpose, it was very, very important to us. And here's your nurturing piece, those three aspects where where the 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 mission leaving and breathing on campus with the teachers, with all of us trying to provide this experience to you and to your students. And so as we bridge into next year, please know that we will keep the mission in mind and the whole school will keep the mission in mind because that's our North Star and we will take our inspiration from it and from your students and your children. So with this quick introduction, I want to focus on a high level update regarding safety. As you know, numbers are favorable right now. The case rate is going down, the positivity rate is going down. California is progressing very nicely with the rollout of the vaccine and we have less and less COVID cases. COVID is still a reality. It's going to be around us and we're right now in this in between where we have very clear measures. We still have strong protocols in place at the school, but also out there, as you probably can see. And we have relaxation happening, particularly for the people that are vaccinated. And we see a lot of people and more and more people now vaccinated right now. This has not been translated yet into education or schools. And so we're waiting for the June fifteenth, which is an important date where we should expect California will actually leave or move beyond the blueprint for a safer economy and the economy will reopen back to normal operations, so to speak, with specific limitations. It will be per industry. There will be no big events and there will be industry specific limitations. So we're waiting to see from the state what it will mean for education. We will have industry guidance from the the state of California, Department of Public Health. And then this will be translated into local guidance by the city of Berkeley. So we're expecting to see that, to know exactly what the fall will look like. We have some ideas, but please know that this is still pending. We do hope that it will be available between June fifteenth and June thirtieth. So we might not know before the end of the school year, just to give you some hints. Some people are talking about not having distancing in the classroom anymore. We know that teenagers are being vaccinated right now. So some people are talking about the possibility of not having masks in some of the classrooms for middle schoolers and high schoolers. So we we don't really know yet. And with that comes, of course, question about, you know, how do we do that? And how do we know who's vaccinated on that? So we we have some questions out there. Please know that we these then and we have a, can we go back to the the previous one? Please, thank you. So we still have some. Please know that we are looking to build. So the two great area for the June fifteenth reopening of the economy will be the vaccine supply is sufficient and hospitalization rates are stable and low and we're getting there. So it's really better and it's encouraging. So still some unknown regarding Kalosha requirements for us, for the employees or the teachers. And then for the public health policies for the students. So that that's the main point I wanted to make on this slide. Lapoche. So the next one is we're selling the orange tier and that means that it's getting better, but it's it's low, but it's stable. So we do expect that it's going to get better soon. And we could see some counties around us in the yellow tier. We should, Alameda should be able to be in their yellow tier around June, probably between early June and mid-June before the blueprint hopefully is lifted. We have the capacity to have in-person celebrations on campus. It's heavily regulated, but nevertheless, we can do it. So we're going to use this guidance to have celebrations for the the graduation ceremonies on campus. We are still putting in place and living in place all of our safety measures. So you shouldn't have seen changes around that. Again, children are not vaccinated right now. Most of our faculty and staff is, but people don't know really who's vaccinated and who's not. Those are our medical information that we don't release. The masking protocol stays in place, etc. Nevertheless, this is a little bit where we are in this ambiguous gray area. I was talking about the CDC released those very strong relaxation of guidelines for the masking for people who are fully vaccinated that can get together indoors without mask. That's a little bit where we stand. We don't really know yet how to translate that to some environments such as schools. But I think it's going to be clarified for us for the fall. Good news on the traveling front. It's just a sign note that I wanted to make. I know some of you are concerned about some of our French teachers. They're under a J one visa, which is a temporary cultural exchange visa and they haven't been able to travel for the past year in the house, which was a big concern for them and for us. And though we have been working with the French Embassy in the US, it was able to secure national interest exemptions for our colleagues under J one visa. So they could go back to France over the summer, which is pretty good news. And just wanted to share that with you today. The next one, please. The vaccine update. Well, vaccine law is going well. So we're very enthusiastic about this. You've seen the Pfizer vaccine authorized for children aged two to fifteen. It's available. A lot of our students are getting vaccinated. So Pfizer also released the press release saying that they're expecting to ask for emergency authorization for children aged two to eleven in the fall and particularly probably around September. So that's also very encouraging. Moderna has had good results. We've seen today also on the vaccine for teenagers. So all of that is good news and it's showing that it's going to move quickly from from now on. Things are going to involve pretty quickly. We have around ninety six percent of our faculty and staff who's vaccinated. So it's also very high, as you can see. Next one, please. A remainder of the school year. So let's take a moment to talk about that. We're continuing the antigen testing for the students. We've lifted it for the faculty and staff who are vaccinated, by the way. We are able to have small and limited in-person gatherings. So we're going to use that for graduation. We'll talk about that in a second. We are trying to have more teachers back on campus and back in the classroom. So particularly some specials were conducted online. They are now back into the classroom, arts and science. And we've had the first in-person camp over the last break for spring break for preschool and K students. So those are really signs that we're going back to some kind of normal. The last day of school will be Friday, June eleventh. As you know, we have had very small changes to the school curriculum, the school calendar, pardon, for this year. And it's going to be the same for next year. The school calendar is very much set. And we are prepared to offer in-person camp for the students, Le Conde Té from July twenty first to July thirtieth. You know, you can contact me as I with any questions about this. I want to take a moment now to discuss one thing. If we can have the next one, please. Well, the graduation, this is the graduation from last year, by the way. This is eighth grade, June twenty 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 twenty, yes, June twenty twenty, where we had our graduates come with, you could see masking distancing. You could see, actually, you, I'm sure you're working amazing where this is the it's the playground of the lower school. You can see the fence in the in the back. You could see actually your parents that are behind the fence. So the parents were not authorized for this one. Remember, it was the beginning of COVID and we still had a lot of unknowns, but it was very safe and it was a beautiful event. And I'm glad we were able to do that and just provide our students with some closure, just honor their hard work and helping them celebrate all of their journey at EB and sending them off in in an unusual way, but in a way that was able to acknowledge and recognize all of their hard work and the fantastic contributions that they've done to our community. So we're going to have also nice graduations. It's going to be a little different, but it's going to be nevertheless happening. So this is the preschool. We'll have small gatherings. There will be limited in time. By the way, the guidance is asking us to really keep those graduation events brief and as brief as possible, quote unquote. So we're going to take some of that and it will be a little shorter than usual, but we are going to get together. So small gatherings for the preschool, distanciation, masking around thirty minutes on campus. It's usually not too long anyway. For the lower school, we'll have a graduation or moving up ceremony for grade five. It's going to be June ninth on the middle school yard. So please make good note of that. The fifth graders are currently on the middle school yard. So the graduation will also happen over there. And it's a larger class. So we'll have the the space, the physical space to accommodate the two classes at the same time. We'll ask you to RSVP and limit the number of guests. But we'll prepare a very nice graduation for you and your students. Then middle school grade eight, the next day on the tenth, and it will be at the lower school. So it's a vice versa a little bit. And something we're going to limit attendance. It will be very similar to the the picture that you've seen and it will be a very nice event as well. Finally, I'm starting to transition a little bit into next year. I want to show you this org chart just to speak briefly about the the change in the organization at the primary school level particularly. This is the organization of the primary campus for twenty one, twenty two. You can see the the head of school at the top here overseeing the the whole academic and extracurricular department or enrichment department. So on the left-hand side, you have enrichment and aesthetic director Miroza Coplman. He has oversight of the enrichment coordinator, Chauncey, and then the enrichment supervisors and all the people involved in aesthetic and basically he's overseeing the enrichment and aesthetic department. That doesn't change. On the complete right-hand side, you have your head of middle school or head of secondary, Richard Lyon, who has oversight over the whole middle school campus, the Grayson campus, and then the the secondary school of the middle school. All faculty and staff, that doesn't change. And at the middle, you have now a head of primary, Magellan North. She's going to take over the the whole primary, sort of preschool K and in the elementary or l'Elementaire under lower school. As Sebastien Robert is moving up into the head of school role, she's going to be the head of primary. To support her, we're going to have two full-time coordinators. One coordinator is going to take care of the elementary and English program coordination. Jeff Myers, you might know Jeff, he's already with us. And then the second coordinator will particularly focus on the maternel and the French program, Elodie Volo. So Elodie is a third grade teacher. She has been with us for many years. She has a teacher, teaching credential, teaching credential for special education, special kind of endorsement. And then she has a master's in teacher training, bilingual master, very, very qualified. And she was hired at this full-time coordinator. So Magellan will have strong team, pedagogical team to help her lead the department. I'm very confident that this organization will provide really good support for the families, for the students, for the teachers, for the staff, and we'll have a very highly functioning team here. So Magellan will have oversight over the primary school and the Heinz campus. And everyone will be under the supervision of Sebastien entering head of school. So I'm going to stop here and hand over to Sebastien, who will share a little bit with you what you can anticipate in the fall.
Thank you, Mehdi. Hello, everyone. So when we think about next year, first, we want to look at the the calendar, some key dates that needs to be on the radar. So first day of school is August fourteenth, which is a Monday. And we will have a welcome day on August the twenty seventh. Though this welcome day might be a little bit different, we might staggered a little bit, you know, the 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 classrooms or by grades, but we want to give an opportunity for the students and the families to come on onsite and explore the the different classrooms. We'll do the first in-service day where there will be no school on October eleventh. Fall break will be between October eighteen to October twenty two. And parent-teacher conference, November eleventh, and the spring break, November twenty four to November twenty six. So very first key dates for first semester. Regarding the academics, we will have a full-time onsite learning for all grades from TPS to grade F eight. We want to, you know, go back to a kind of normal. So we anticipate that we can go back to classroom. So no more parts or stable cohort. And this, we will be able to to really do that because we think that, you know, distancing might, as Mehdi mentioned, might go away. But we are still looking at the, you know, while looking for the the guidance to really make sure that we can do that. But we really anticipate going back to classrooms. We'll have only one schedule. So no more stagger schedule with, you know, different times. So one schedule for preschool and elementary and the middle school will have its own schedule. So from eight thirty to three thirty. We'll offer a full-time home learning program from for the preschool and the lower school. And we expect that program to stay until December twenty twenty one, when, you know, vaccination for for students will be really available for everyone. And this home learning program, we want to make it under certain conditions, so medical conditions only with a doctor's notes. It's really important that we offer this program for, you know, dedicated students who cannot come back on campus for medical conditions. We will not do any international field trips in twenty twenty one for semester, but we anticipate and we envision that starting in February twenty twenty two, we might go to back to Delhi, local field trips. And also we have already secured for grade three, Marinadlands, grade four, also Coloma. And for grade five, we're also expecting a trip. Maybe not in France, but in Canada. So we'll we'll have more information, you know, back to school. So this is a great news because we want to focus on experiential learning. It's it's something that is very important for our students and we want this experience to come back. We'll have small onsite events and parents will be allowed on campus. But really, we don't want to go back to a full NPR with two hundred people. But we want to target maybe small events and and try to have maybe a flexible event with some some events may might be online and some events on sites. So we'll see what the guidance tells us. So the school structure, in a preschool, we'll have eight classes. We'll still use the entrance on tenth for some classes. We'll have teachers and teacher assistants back in the same class except for one small classroom where there will be less students. So we'll we'll be only one teacher. At the lower school level, we'll have ten classes. We'll do the morning welcome in the yard as we we used to do to do it from eight oh five to eight twenty five. So classes will start at eight twenty five. Specialist teachers will be in the class. So no more Zoom as it is right now. We'll we'll have music back and we are very pleased and very happy to 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 get the the music back. Art, science, garden, P will be on campus. And we'll do some grade level courting, meaning maybe the recess will be by grade level. Where we might not mix all the the grades together, but go by by grades. And still maybe get some some areas, you know, for for the for each grade. At the middle school, we'll have six classes, a full-time onsite program. And athletic program might resume. We have a question mark because we we are still waiting for the guidance to come soon. Enrichment program. So we'll, we think that carpool will be available from grade one to grade eight, lower school and middle school. We are working on providing before care, but only available as a package. So we need a signup. We cannot do a daily thing. We need to know in advance who the students will will be. So we can, you know, plan accordingly. Aftercare, as you know, will be available as a package also from three thirty to six. We'll have the hot lunch back with Flo's Kitchen, which was our lunch provider just before the the pandemic. We'll have more enrichment activities and Mirza during the back to school, we'll give you more detailed plan regarding enrichment activities. And we'll still have étude only via signup. So étude for those who don't know, it's a study hall where usually students can work or do their homework at the the lower school during thirty minutes or forty minutes under the supervision of a teacher. Camps will be available, October break, February break and spring break. So COVID measures. So as we we said, we are waiting for the Kalosha guidance by the end of June, hopefully. We think that we'll still have some safety protocols. So mask, of course, for all the AB students and all the B personal screening, ventilation, surveillance testing is to be determined. We don't know yet, you know, with the variants or other things, if we we will have to to do surveillance testing, but we have this tool in our toolbox to to add a layer of safety. And as Mehdi shared, we are working and we have worked on a free feet distance between the student desk. But we have heard in some in some webinars with some, you know, counties or CDPH that distancing in the classroom might disappear. So it's really important for us to know because we we can plan accordingly for the for the fall. And we we won't do temporary check in the in the morning when students arrive. So the next tunnel, we are planning to have one August seventeenth. We'll give you the most up-to-date details regarding back to school. Mehdi and I and all the leadership team hope to see you during the last week of school. Every morning drop-off will be there every morning to maybe just to, you know, say a few words goodbye and and share some some insights of this year. And talking about this year, one last word. I think that as as EB parents, you know, that we are in an amazing community. And with this this very challenging year, I think it's it should be, you know, the time to share your experience, inspire all our parents to to join our amazing community. And while we think about next year, we already think about the admission season that will start early in the fall. And we know that some prospective parents will come on campus. We'll also look at, you know, reviews and online program and, you know, the the different Bay Area and parents' press. And we would like to count on you and your experience to to be EB ambassadors and share the word that we we are an amazing community and an amazing school. So that was a one of my last words, but as the the school year ends, I think it's it's important also to to share your experience and and inspire all our parents. So I would be really grateful and I thank you if you can share the word. Okay. And I think that's the end of a presentation. So we can start and open the floor for questions. I'm going to stop sharing.
Hi, Sebastien. Thank you so much for your last pitch. I appreciate your help in telling the world value be as the admission officer of the school. I have created a document to kind of keep track of all the questions that we've had. We have right now and in a few comments. So we have two really two big themes. So I we're going to go one after another. One is a question related to COVID specifically. And then there is a bunch of question related to reopening the school. So I'm going to start with a COVID question and go one by one, if you don't mind. So the first question we had was around surface cleaning. A lot of guidance has suggested that the nationwide emphasis on surface cleaning is no longer supported. Are there plans to lower the amount of surface cleaning cleaning done now was one of our questions.
We, I can take this one. So yes, we are following the the latest on the on the virus, including protocols and best practices. So some of us are doing that on our own and then we discuss it during the COVID safety committee. And sometimes we also receive direct mandates from agencies. So this one is coming from both places, I would say. But we have actually decreased the frequency that we under which we clean surfaces. So we used to, to give you an example, clean the restrooms every thirty minutes, which was it's dense and it's very frequent. So it was demanding a lot of resources on our end. And so when we start learning about the fact that it wasn't maybe necessarily needed, we transitioned to a two-hours window. Same thing with some of the lunch boxes. We have allowed some the students to come back with more equipment into the school. So we absolutely do that. We try to calibrate the best we can the difficulty what we're facing like any other organizations to define what is the standard of care. What is expected of a good organization on top of everything? And this is changing. This is a moving target. But please know that our process is to keep our eye on, you know, what defines the standard of care. But uh please know that our process is to keep our eye on, you know, what defines the standard of care, and that includes, you know, the frequency of cleaning.
Thank you, Mehdi. Second question around COVID is, um if we have classrooms of student with mixed vaccination states because of the mixed age in the middle school, uh will we default to remaining masked? So I question about mask, I believe, back to school.
Oh, yeah, so yeah, for sure. Uh we'll we'll always go um, you know, to the safest um on measure. So uh we'll definitely uh keep the mask uh if we we don't know uh also, you know, who is vaccinated or not, and if we have a mixed uh mixed cohort.
But it's, that's what is is happening right now, is we have students at the middle school that are vaccinated already. Uh the 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 state will let us know at some point what they do expect from all of us in schools. They they will let us know what we're supposed to be doing with that, because that's a that's a big one. This one's actually a big, big, important measure.
A question that's connected to this one, uh about um uh vaccination. Yeah, uh if we can self-report vaccination in families, that would really help manage school logistics. Will the school implement that so we can avoid not knowing who is vaccinated and be able to remove further limitations? I guess that's, you know, about no self-reporting, family self-reporting vaccination to help us um will we?
It might be, yeah, that's that's also a good a good comment and a good question, honestly. Um I will say that the general comment I would make is that we're 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 in this place where we don't know how to handle that. Not all, not just us EB, but everyone. Uh this is a complex question, it involves privacy and also safety. And so at some point, the state will come up with a process, and they will let us know what they expect from us, as well as the other independent school and public schools. So they they will let us know how they want us to deal with that, and the city of Berkeley will give us also more directives. But we're gonna wait on this one, because that's that's a complex one. Uh I guess people are sharing, you know, they're giving us information about their vaccination status. Right now, we're not gonna do anything with it, because we are asked to keep everything in place until we know what's happening with the blueprint. But by June fifteenth, we should know a little bit more. Uh the natural course of action is that um, you know, little by little and and actually quite rapidly, the state will reopen, particularly after June fifteen. The path to no more distancing and masking is vaccination. So we should expect at some point that the number of people who are vaccinated will by far um outnumber the the number of people who are not vaccinated. But these people, and no value judgment here, will be in a situation where there is no COVID mitigation measure anymore. The vaccine is the way to prevent people from catching COVID. And so how we will go from where we are to, you know, no more masking, distancing in the classroom, we don't know yet, but we know that this is coming. Uh again, the state will let us know how they want us to handle that.
Thank you, Mehdi. There is a question I'm not sure we we can answer, but I'm gonna just say what it was. The why are only ninety-six percent of faculty and staff vaccinated?
Uh it's not mandatory, so that will be the short answer. And so it's uh it's people's choice right now. We have encouraged it uh because we do believe in the vaccine, uh and we do believe that this is the path forward. Nevertheless, it's uh people's choice, and some people, for various reasons, uh they have uh chosen not to be vaccinated at this point.
Another question around antigen antigen testing that was lifted for faculty and staff. Uh why was that lifted since uh it they can still transmit the virus?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh I will say that uh first, you know, transmission as well as uh actually catching the disease is very limited when you're vaccinated. So we we are learning more about that, but we have seen these vaccines being very efficient. Second of all, uh you know, the the general sense from the city and the county is that uh they they have been hesitant with um, you know, vaccination will be for asymptomatic people. There is a high chance, if you are vaccinated and you go under a surveillance testing program that is pretty frequent, that you will have a higher frequency of, you know, false positive. Uh so they've given us the the kind of general sense that it was not necessary. It was really a little bit too um too much, uh to be honest. And so we felt that the vaccine was the the really the the one thing here that was preventing everyone from catching COVID. But also, please keep in mind that it's vaccine plus distancing plus masking. We have this multi-layer approach that is very, very efficient, and it has proven to be so efficient that we we don't think we need the surveillance testing program on top of that for people who are particularly vaccinated at this point.
Thank you. Um when will you know whether you will require students to be vaccinated?
Uh I can take this one, Sebastien, feel free to chime in. We we don't know if it will re-require students to be vaccinated right now, that is not the situation. We are not requiring students to be vaccinated. One of the reasons is that it's emergency approved. Uh and so it will be difficult for schools in general uh to require uh the vaccine, uh also for faculty and staff. Uh the second reason is that our practice is to require vaccination that are um mandatory by state. And so I think this will will probably continue to be aligned with that. It might be a situation where the vaccine is mandatory for students or teachers. It's not gonna be before fall twenty-two, honestly, if that happens.
Thank you, Mehdi. Another last question uh regarding COVID. If screening continues, will be will there be travel restriction as they are currently? If screening continues, will there be travel restrictions?
Um I can take this one. So screening, the 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 thinking right now is that it will continue, but it will be also self-screening, the way you've done it this year. Uh parents receiving the text from Ruvna, we're thinking of keeping Ruvna dropping the temperature check at the gates, because we are going to consolidate uh not only staggered, you know, schedules, they're not gonna be staggered that much, but also entry points. So we will need to fluidify a little bit the logistics of entering the school, so the pre-screening will stay. Uh not the temperature check. Uh we do expect the community to be vaccinated or with high vaccination rates. So we are going to probably uh drop the the quarantine after breaks. Uh we are going to maybe case by case ask people to report if they have had a high-risk activity, something like that. Uh but again, I I think that it's gonna move quickly over the summer, and uh we are going to be surprised by the fall. If things continue to be favorable like this, uh we're going to be surprised that we are going back to for something that really looks like no normalcy.
Thank you, and that um uh that's uh that's it for the COVID question. Now, I we have a few question about reopening the school. There's a question about um the early care that was answered. I believe we we are gonna offer early care in the uh fall. So I don't know if we need, uh the person who sent that question, if we need more uh detail on that, please feel free to add something into the chat box, but I believe we answered that question. Um there is a question about Elodie becoming coordinator, that means she will no longer uh be a third grade uh teacher, correct?
Correct. And we are, we are in the process of hiring uh teachers, uh because we have also um teachers who are going to move on and decided to uh, you know, to go uh in other places of our schools. So we are right now in the process of interviewing uh people, and uh we are finalizing uh the structure.
Thank you. Um is aftercare pickup allowed any time between three thirty and six? Or uh is it gonna be certain dur- during a certain time and be more organized?
Hi, everybody. Um so at this time, we haven't changed our plan for aftercare release. Um so there was is in place a four forty-five release time and a five forty-five release time. Um some of that might depend on whether or not parents are allowed on campus again. Um that that was determining factor as to whether or not we can have a like an endless team of students leaving campus. So I'm no change in that, um but stay tuned, this may change over the summer.
Great. Um and another question for you, Mirza, I believe, um regarding aftercare in the fall. Do you plan to offer enrichment activities and etudes too?
Yes. So we are looking at um uh offering enrichment activities again. I think we think it's gonna be possible. Again, it's a lot of forecast, but it's looking pretty good. It may be a slightly different system than we're used to, uh because we will be organizing aftercare uh mostly at stand as the way they are by grade. You may have aftercare classes that are very specific to a grade, whereas we used to have like a K to two class or something like that. Um so there may be some more limited options, uh but we will build it back, rest assured, and we will have as many options as we can in, as we can put out there, we will do. Um and etude, uh I'll let Sebastian answer that question, be the organizer of that program.
Yeah, the etude will be uh on the on the sign up uh in a process. And uh more for for the entire period, same thing. Um so we'll we'll not, we'll not do drop-ins uh really, you know, just have a stable cohort also for for the etude. And we know that uh this group is always together. So we'll send you uh more information for the etude, sign up, it can happen, you know, late August. So we'll give you more information, but uh there will be etude.
Great. We have actually a few question back to COVID. So um there was a question from Lloyd about uh the does the state require vaccine for second grade? Uh I believe the answer is no, but um I don't think the anything has been uh authorized for children younger than twelve at this moment, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh and then there's a question about enforcing the no sick children staff on campus work um uh really well well this year. Uh masking and distancing really cut down on cold and the flu. Uh but none, no sick people with any symptom at all was a major one. So will we will we still enforce no sick children and staff on campus?
Uh yes, uh I think it's a, you know, it's a predominant if we want to be uh safe in our community. Uh and that's the reason why we're keeping the Ruvna, the self-screening. Uh if a child uh shows symptoms that are really close to uh the the COVID symptoms, uh you know, parents should really keep uh the the child for one, two, or three days. Maybe we won't ask anymore a PCR test when we come back, uh you know, on campus. But uh definitely, I think uh that's one of the takeaways of of COVID, is that uh now we should really be careful when, uh you know, we have a runny nose or we have mild symptoms to keep students at home, and so we protect the entire community. Um and we see that it's a it's decreasing also the the number of uh of of sick children. So I think it's a it's a it's a good opportunity for us to keep this uh this process.
Um and then uh another question about music program, uh will will the music program be back at the middle school as well?
Yes, Anne Currie uh will be uh teaching uh music at the middle school.
Great. Um and and then there were a few comments, and and I'm happy to share them, or we can just um uh uh just keep them for us. But one parent will recommend that we keep strict screening temperature, especially during flu season. Uh that would be really good to kind of, again, you know, check on those symptoms. Um and then uh one parent also notify the group that the Moderna vaccine uh is gonna be authorized soon for teens. I don't know if it has already or if it's in the process of being, but we will have more vaccine for teens very soon. Uh that's it for the question unless we have um some of our participants today that want to add anything in the chat. Uh we have one more coming. Will there be looping next year for first and second grade?
This is a very specific question, and no, no looping between first and second.
Uh and how about is is it gonna be music at the elementary school? I believe the answer is yes, the music is back and all all classes. I do not see any more questions for now.
Well, great. Thank you so much, Manu. Uh I want to thank everyone for joining tonight. Thank you for tuning in. Always a pleasure to be with you, and uh you could see uh we are prepping for the fall, and uh the school is hard at work to make sure that we'll have the best program for you. Uh thank you all so much for partnering with us this year. Uh we really appreciated that. And I think all of us were able to work together to keep the community safe. So thank you, thank you very much. Uh I leave the last word to my colleague.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Uh thank you for our trust, and I I would take also, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, to thank Mehdi, really. Uh whole I felt, you know, thank you, Mehdi, for leading us through this challenging time. Uh it has been, uh you know, very uh very challenging, a very difficult summer last year. Uh but we went through uh all of this, uh thanks to your leadership, your skill set, your calm, and uh, you know, your knowledge. So we'll miss you really, really, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll miss you too.